It's August first. Thank you. It's August 1st, 2023. We are now called to order. I believe this will be a fairly brief meeting. Before we start public participation, Laurel just wants to lay out a couple of rules given our four-person membership tonight.
Yes, thank you so much. I just wanted to let you all know as just a quick reminder. This applies for minutes as well as any other dead item tonight. We have, of course, our public hearing, but any agenda item requiring a vote of the planning board is denied if it doesn't receive an affirmative vote of four or more. With our particular item later in the day, if there's a vote of three to one in favor of or something like that, then that person can apply to appeal within seven days to rehear it with the idea being that maybe if the full board was present that they could be affirmed. So just wanted to let you know in order to move something forward, we have to have a vote of four or more.
Thank you so much, Laurel.
Thank you.
So we're going to go to public participation. I think Laurel, if it's okay, I'm going to utilize the the traditional rules we've been using thus far until we have a conversation to change that, which is public participation. You get three minutes. You can talk about anything you would like to other than the public hearing items on our agenda. So if you would, if you have, if you would like to speak, please raise your electronic hand. In the meantime, I think Devin will be, are you reading us the rules of engagement?
That is correct. I will take care of that. Awesome. Thank you, Madam Chair. And as she had mentioned, we do have one item for up for consideration tonight for public comment. So we do have just a few slides to go over here for this public participation process. So for this, the city has engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversation. This vision supports the physical and emotional safety for community members, staff, and board and commission members, as well as the democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences, and political preferences. But following are examples of rules of decorum found in the Boulder revised code and other guidelines that will support this vision. These will be upheld during this meeting. All remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. Obscenity, racial epithets, and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability to conduct this meeting are prohibited. Participants are required to identify themselves using the name they are commonly known by, and individuals must display their whole name before being allowed to speak online. Currently, only audio testimony is permitted online. When we come to, when we come to the time for public, general public comment and for the public hearing item, it's pretty simple and straightforward to participate. On the bottom of your, of your bar here, you will see three icons, one of them being the raised hand icon. You'll simply just click that at the designated time, and that will let all of us know that you're interested in commenting on the item. With that, I will turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'm eating a lot, I'm eating dinner while we do this, and my apologies. Does anyone who is in our attendance want to speak?
We have one.
Go ahead, Devin, please. Oh, Devin, you just, you muted yourself.
Lynn, I'll go ahead and promote you here, and then I'll have the timer displayed on my screen.
All right, Lynn, we lost Lynn completely. Oh, no, there she is. Lynn, can you unmute yourself and then you are free to speak?
Yeah, do you want my video?
I do not think we utilize video. So no, just your words would be great. Thank you so much.
Massachusetts Legislature requires me to have my friggin' video. I had to say Boulder doesn't do that. Where the heck is Boulder? In the dark ages? Seriously? You don't have videos three years later? Unbelievable. It's your responsibility, not city council. You report that I'm complaining that I want to see videos. You know, I see you, you need to see me. I mean, how many times do I need to waste my time on all the city problems we have instead talking about simple things like technical aspects of this meeting? Unbelievable. What a waste, isn't it? What a waste. You could be hearing some really good stuff from me. Instead, you're hearing about video. It's just gonna go on that way, isn't it? Yep. Just gonna go on. We need shoe repair zoning in Boulder shoe repair store? We need drugstore across from this big, huge development at Boulder Community Hospital? No drugstore. Fifteen-minute neighborhoods? No, it's going the opposite way. You know what Zoklo is? You know, Waterview, I went by there. Unbelievable, 300, 400 units. Every single one has a friggin' garage. You know what that's gonna do to Arapaho? Turn it into a highway. A bigger highway, let's put it that way. Riding my bike out there, I do not enjoy. I'm two feet from people that are going 70 miles an hour, and that kid that was killed, 17 years old, he was going for the gold medal. Did you know that? You know, we've got problems here with people trying to get places, and 213 is supposed to be stopping sprawl, and we've got a whole city out by the JCC, a whole nother city called Zoklo City. Waterview. The view when the big flood comes because it's on the flood plain. Caroline Miller is a problem in the sense that every city governmental department is under threat right now with her dismissal. She was a whistleblower. She knew what was going on, and she called it on CU South. Illicit conversations. Going away from Colorado statutes? Not okay. It threatens the planning board too. Done.
Thank you, Lynn, very much. I don't see any more hands, so we will move on to approval of minutes. Approval of planning board minutes from April 25th. Has everyone had a chance to review the revised minutes? But you know what? Laurel. Kurt, you weren't yet a member on the 25th, were you?
Yes, I was.
Oh, you were. Okay. I was gonna say, we don't have, we don't have four. Okay. So do I, this needs to be a voice vote, correct, Laurel?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Kurt, you have, you have some additional comments?
Yeah, I just, I submitted a minor amendment to the May 16th. Are we just talking about the 25th?
We're just, we're gonna do them one at a time.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
My apologies.
It's no problem. All right, so planning board minutes from April 25th, Laura.
Do we need a motion? I move that we approve the planning board minutes from April 25th.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Laurel, Laura.
I.
Kurt. Lisa. Sarah's an I. Okay, they are approved. Can I have, are any comments or additional information on the May 2nd minutes? All right, Laura, you want to make a motion?
I move that we approve the May 2nd minutes.
Okay, Kurt. Yeah, Laura.
Yes.
Lisa. And Sarah, yes. Look, Lisa, just so you know, we're not actually hearing you when you say yes. Now, we have a problem with the May 16th meeting. I wasn't there, which means we only have three people to vote on it. So I think we're gonna have to carry it over to the next meeting, if you don't mind.
And if I can add, Devin, I submitted just a very minor formatting change on page 1265, and I'm not seeing that reflected in the current version.
Yeah, sorry about that. I do, I remember I'd call you submitting the edits there. I'll go back and check on that and see what happened there.
Thank you.
Great. And whenever our next meeting is, which I think is next week, we can, we can vote on those minutes then. All right. Thank you all. We are done with approval of minutes. There are no discussion of dispositions or call-ups or continuations, which now brings us to our public hearing item. Five A, public hearing and consideration of a recommendation on a request for annexation of an approximately 11,766, that's approximate, square foot, point two seven acre property located at 3033 Third Street with initial zoning designation of residential low RL1, case number LUR2021-00049. Allison Blaine is going to be presenting to us. The applicant is in the house if we have questions. Allison, am I correct that he doesn't have a plan statement? Is that correct?
Yeah, the applicants will say a few words, but will not be making a presentation.
They'll say a few, okay, perfect. Then we'll have questions for staff and the applicant, and then we will go to board discussion. We'll have public comment if there is any, and then we'll go to board discussion. And our goal is to get this done in under an hour. So Allison, please take it away.
All right, give me just a second to get my screen going. Okay. Everyone can see my screen? Great. Okay. Good evening, everyone. The item before the board tonight is the annexation of approximately point two seven acres of land with an initial zoning designation of RL1 located at 3033 Third Street. The project completed the necessary notice requirements for the code. A written notice was sent to property owners within 600 feet, and public notice was also posted on the property. Staff did not receive any questions or concerns from neighbors. In terms of the review process and criteria for those who are maybe unfamiliar, annexation is the process to incorporate land into city boundaries and includes several layers of review. The first layer is state law and the Colorado Constitution, which limits the authority of municipalities to annex lands. However, any annexation must meet all state statutes. Second, an annexation must also meet city ordinances and policies of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, specifically BBC policies related to annexation, limits on expansion, and growth requirements. Land that has significant development or redevelopment potential must also provide a special opportunity opportunity to the city or community benefit to reduce negative impacts that may be associated with new development. And last, when a property is annexed, zoning is established according to land use designations in the land use map of the BBCP, and then must also be consistent with existing development patterns. An annexation agreement is required, which is a negotiated contract to establish the terms and conditions of the annexation. And planning board must then review the annexation and make a recommendation to the city council on whether or not the annexation should be approved and the terms, conditions, and zoning that should be applied. The site is located along the western boundary of city limits along Third Street with Evergreen Ave. to the north and Bellwood Ave. to the south. Properties along Third Street have been gradually annexed into the city throughout the last few years. Prior to the application to annex, the site contained a single-family dwelling built in 1924. As indicated on the survey that was reviewed during the application and shown here on these photos, the existing dwelling has since been demolished and will be redeveloped upon annexation. The site is also currently connected to city utilities. The majority of the property is located within the area two shown there in gray. Per the BBCP, area two refers to the area that is under county jurisdiction that may be annexed into the city as long as it meets BBC policies on birth management, birth apartments, and annexation. And then there's also a small portion, that green sliver there that is located within area three, which may also be annexed to the city for preservation purposes. Here's a little bit of a closer look at what's going on with the site. The blue line does run through the site with the area three portion to the west and the area two portion to the east. The area three portion is also subject to an existing scenic easement from 1981 that requires the area three portion to remain undeveloped and preserved in its rural state. Such redevelopment can occur west of the blue line or in the area three portion. The property is designated as low density residential on the BBCP land use map, which specifies a density of two to six dwelling units per acre. The anticipated uses for these zones are single-family ones. The applicant is requesting RL1 zoning consistent with the surrounding properties within the city and adjacent to the site shown here in the yellow. The RL1 district is described as single-family detached residential dwelling units at low to very low residential densities. And as I mentioned a little bit earlier, an annexation agreement is required as part of the process, and annexation terms are ready to anticipate any future development of the property, and I wanted to touch base on some of the important provisions going into this agreement. The first one being the area three preservation and conveyance, which states that the area three portion will remain in its natural and rural state per the existing scenic easement. However, upon request, the area three portion must be conveyed to the city. And we also have the inclusionary housing fees, which states that for each new market rate or non-affordable unit constructed, the property owner or developer must pay two times the applicable cash and lieu. There are three key issues identified by staff in the memo. The first one is does the annexation comply with applicable state annexation statutes? Two, is the proposal consistent with the city's annexation and other BBCP policies? And three is the initial zoning of RL1 appropriate for the subject property? For key issue one, in terms of state law, the annexation petition is consistent with the statutory and constitutional requirements, and the site meets the one-sixth contribuity requirement to the city. And there is a community interest to annex the property as it has development potential. It's already connected to city utilities and is capable of being integrated into the city. For key issue two, in terms of BBCP policies, the site can't be considered for annexation because it is within the Boulder Valley Planning Area, as we saw majority in area two and then a smaller portion in area three. And the area two portion of the property has the potential to be redeveloped and provides a benefit to the city in the form of cash and lieu fees and preservation of open space, therefore meeting policy 1.17D of BBCP. And then last, in terms of zoning, if a property is annexed, zoning is established consistent with the goals in the land use map of the BBCP. As mentioned earlier, the site is designated as low-density residential, which anticipates a density of two to six dwelling units per acre, where RL1 zone district allows a density of up to 6.2 dwelling units per acre. The RL1 zoning district supports detached, single-family uses, and all future development will need to comply with city solar and energy requirements as well as compatible development standards. And to conclude, staff finds that the proposed annexation is consistent with state statutes as well as BBCP policies. Staff finds that the initial zoning of RL1 is consistent with the BBCP goals and land use designation and is compatible with the surrounding properties. Therefore, staff is recommending that planning board adopt the following motion, which I have here on the screen.
Thank you, Allison. Our folks, all right, if I ask the applicant to speak and then we'll ask questions. Everyone okay with that? Okay. I don't know the name of the applicant. I'm sorry. Devin, can you bring the applicant forward so that he or she can speak to us?
Yes, absolutely. There are three of the applicants on the line, and I have promoted them all. Just need to accept the promotion there, and you'll be ready to go. Thanks.
Thank you.
Can I go and speak then?
Yes, I think, do you have a sense of the amount of time you're going to want to speak to in total?
Two minutes.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then you have to identify yourself, please.
Hi, my name is Sherry Goff. I'm at 29020 Broom Trail. I'm the Barsha's architect, and I'm speaking on her behalf.
Great.
So, Andrea and Michael have lived in Boulder for 31 years. They raised their family in a home just outside of the city of Boulder, now, and are now looking to downsize. They purchased the property at 3033 Third Street to be more centrally located and to build their retirement home. In analyzing the property, we realized most of the surrounding properties are in the city of Boulder rather than an incorporated Boulder County, and that the property has both city water and sewer. We determined it would be beneficial to seek annexation in order to build a home consistent in mass and form with the neighbors and to formalize provisions, the city's provisions of utilities. We also believe the annexation will help create a more well-defined, consistent western edge of the city. There are a number of community benefits that we can, that we can find it with annexation. The Barsha's are granting the city a 25-foot easement along the Silver Lake Ditch. This will provide access to the ditch for needed maintenance. There is an existing scenic easement on the western edge of the property that is for the benefit of the city and community. This annexation agreement reconfirms my client's obligation to preserve that portion, the property, in accordance with the scenic easement. In addition, upon request, they will convey the scenic easement portion of the property to the city. And finally, with the building of a new home, the Barsha's have agreed to pay the two times the amount of cash and lieu for affordable housing. Thank you for your time and reviewing requests for this annexation. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Michael, did you want to say anything?
Sorry, I had to unmute.
No. Okay, that's fine. There is no requirement that you say something.
Okay. I'm happy to, happy to answer, but I think Sherry covered it.
Okay, great. All right, thank you so much. All right, so now, does anyone on the planning board have questions for staff or for the applicant? All right, oh wait, Kurt does. Yes, Kurt.
Yeah, I have some questions for staff. So my understanding, based on my calculations, the compatible development rules would allow for an 11,766 square foot parcel about 4,315 square feet of of floor area, is that right?
Yeah, that's right. Assuming that would be the max gross floor area, Kurt. But that also assumes that setbacks are met and all the other volumetric standards that may actually chip away at that. But as far as the math goes, that would be the max.
And that does not include basement, is that right?
As long as it doesn't pop out of grade more than two feet, it's not considered in the floor area calculation.
So conceivably, assuming setbacks are met, but I think setbacks are what the, the, the side setbacks are a sum of 15 feet, is that right? In RL1?
Yes, in RL1, there is the yeah, I can't remember what we call it in the code. I'd have to look it up, but you basically have to position it so that it's a maximum of 15 feet.
Yeah, okay. So if you were building, just very rough picture, if you were building a two-story house with a basement, a fully submerged basement, 4,300 square feet on the upper floors, the, the first and second floor, you'd end up around 6,500 square feet, maybe, of total floor area. Does that seem roughly right? Including the basement?
I'd probably defer to the applicant on that, but yeah, that you know, assuming that the, the whole basement, you know, is dug, the, you know, the entire perimeter of the house, that sounds right to me.
Yeah. Okay, and then the, the cash and lieu, my understanding is the normal cash and lieu for a detached house is $52,025, and so this would be $104,050 total cash. Okay, and so for just, just sort of very roughly, for $104,000 of cash and lieu, considering whatever the current rate is to build a unit of affordable housing and the, the multiplier that we get with cash and lieu by leveraging it using Lytech funding or whatever, do you have any rough feeling like how many, how many affordable units would this lead to, or what fraction of an affordable unit could you typically build with this $104,000?
I wouldn't have a feel for that, and I don't, we weren't prepared to have somebody from Housing and Human Services on the call this evening. It's something we could certainly follow up on, Kurt, but with the contribution, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure fractionally what that resulted in the, in the market.
Okay. But I, I think we've heard that the general multiplier is, is two to three times, sorry, that, that Lytech funding or whatever, you know, we get through the state gives a, maybe a two to three times multiplier on whatever the, is contributed from the Affordable Housing Fund. Does that seem roughly right?
Yeah, again, I I don't want to speak, you know, for our colleagues in housing or
Yeah. I, I'm just, I'm trying to understand, yeah, how much affordable housing or how much of an affordable, what fraction of an affordable housing we get with this? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. And that might be a question to direct outside the framework of this hearing to Kurt, to Kurt Fernhaber or Michelle Allen to try to understand what the ratios are. Okay, any other questions for either staff or applicant? Okay, great. Oh, Lisa.
Yeah, I just noticed that the applicant said that they're looking to downsize. And I was just wondering if you have any more information about kind of what you're hoping or planning to build here and where you're at with the plans for that.
Should I answer that? Me, or Michael, do you want to answer?
No, go ahead, Sheri.
Yeah, I mean, so, yeah, we have a schematic design, but we've been basically on hold until this goes through. This is a pretty long process, as you guys all know. So, yeah, we have a schematic plan that we've worked on. It doesn't max out this, I mean, it doesn't come with square footage, but I think you were asking earlier, but because we have
That was kind of what I was trying to get at, Sheri. I, I know that once it's annexed, you'll have a lot of and, and not, not that I, you know, you'll have freedom, right? If you resold the parcel or whatever. I, I was just curious, you know, if it is built by these communal, long-term community members, if you had a sense of like roughly what it might look like, because Kurt kind of had some questions, I think, about square footage, and so I just wanted to give you an opportunity to speak to it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we can't get that much basement in. I mean, we have, this doesn't make any sense, right? Because we end up having, the way it's designed, there's a lower level and partial, part of the lower level counts towards a square footage, so, you know.
Cool, great. And I don't want to lock you into design, because once you get on the site, it can change. Thank you.
Right. Thank you all. Michael and Sherry and Brad can turn off your cameras, and we will now take public comments on this item. If anyone has public comment, now would be the time to raise your hand. Lynn, you have three minutes. Devin, if you can unmute Lynn and start the clock, that would be great. Lynn, go ahead, please. Get to unmute yourself.
I guess I also wonder about the size of this development. You know, are they gonna build another 600,000 or 6,000 square foot place on this property? This is on the open space, basically, and on the urban wildlife interface. And we've already got 311 there. And And. Three eleven failed on their affordable housing. Part at Fru House. And. That's basically why they, they got their road paved for them. Was an agreement. That makes the planning board look ineffectual. When, you know, you have agreements and they aren't maintained. And so I say, keep the agreements as strict as you possibly can. I can understand these people wanting to. Annex then and improve the. General property line and. For whatever reason, they're not annexed, and so the city has some power there to express some community benefit. And if we're going to provide them, you know, another project for a six thousand square foot house on the open space. I'd say, no thanks. We don't need that on the edge of Boulder. But they aren't talking about that. So that's a problem for me. You know, this is an opportunity for you as a planning board to put some constraints on them. Any affordable housing, any inclusionary housing they might be responsible for. Those could be. Increased if there are any. Or any other, I mean, it's nice that they're giving twenty-five-foot easement to Silver Lake Ditch. But what other impositions are they? Exerting on the city of Boulder by this proposed annexation. What are, what's the city giving up? Yeah. I thought that we're trying to get more affordable housing, but. As far as long-term affordable housing, I don't think this is going to produce it.
All right, Lynn, thank you so much. Your time is up, thank you. Alrighty, we will now go to our deliberations. There are three key issues, and I'll just remind everybody that this is kind of a straightforward. Application. So key issue number one is, does the annexation comply with the applicable state annexation statutes? Key issue number two, is the proposal consistent with the city's annexation and BBCP policies? And key issue number three is the initial zoning RL one appropriate for the subject property. So let's start with key issue number one. Folks have comments or Lisa?
Yeah, I think staff laid it out pretty clearly in the memo. This is, in my opinion, consistent with state statutes. Yeah, I, I don't find any reason to disagree with that, so I agree that it's consistent.
Laura?
I agree with Lisa.
Okay, Kurt?
I agree with Lisa and Laura.
Okay, as do I. All right. Key issue number two is the proposal consistent with the city's annexation and BBCP policies? Lisa, you still have your hand up?
Oh, I'll go first again, but then I won't go first on the third one. Sorry, I just didn't put it down. Yes, yes, I think so. You know, the fact that it's in, what's it called, Area Two, Planning Area Two. And the fact that it's already on city utilities, and that usually for. Public welfare inconsistency reasons, it's nice to pull stuff in when it's already on city utilities like this is. I did have some questions about the blue line, which I think were adequately addressed. In the memo explaining, you know, that that would be preserved since it does cross the blue line. Yeah, and I won't get into the third thing, which I think is the zoning. But yeah, I, I think it's consistent with the BBCP, and furthermore, although this isn't the question too, it's consistent with what the city likes to do. It's not quite an inholding, but if you look on the map, it's kind of darn close to it. If you kind of think of Area Three and the blue line as, as, you know, being something we can't build above anyway, it's kind of surrounded by city. And generally, when that happens, it's a good idea for a host of reasons to try to pull it in if someone's interested. So in a way, it's sort of a gift that they want to come in. So, yeah, I find it consistent.
All right, thank you, Lisa, Laura, and then Kurt.
I think Lisa said it very well. I really appreciated her analysis and staff's analysis. The only thing I would add is that, you know, the, when we annex a property, we look for that property to provide a benefit to the city. And I think that staff explained well and the applicant explained well what those benefits are. In terms of the scenic easement being maintained and conveyed to the city if requested. The Silver Lake Ditch easement and the two times the normal cash in lieu that would be required. So they are providing additional benefit to the city for that development potential. They're already on city water and sewer, as Lisa said, so annexation was anticipated and it's Area Two appropriate for annexation, so yes.
Kurt?
Well, I agree with most of the benefits that Lisa and Laura outlined. Certainly in terms of the, the open space easement and so on. I am concerned about the implications generally for housing affordability. When I read the annexation, the section one point seventeen of the BBCP. And the housing policies in the BBCP. Sort of the, the general thrust that I get is that annexation should improve affordability in the city. So one point seventeen E says, for annexation consideration, emphasis will be given. To the benefits achieved from the creation of permanently affordable housing. This certainly will produce some benefit from the creation of permanently affordable housing. No doubt about that. We also have BBCP policy seven point oh two, affordable housing goals. Seven point oh seven, mixture of housing types, seven point oh eight, preserve existing housing stock. Seven point fif, seven fifteen, integration of permanently affordable housing. And seven seventeen. Market affordability, all of which speak in terms of. Improving the affordability of housing, basically, in the city. Based on the, the FAR that would be allowed on this property, forty-three hundred and fifteen square feet. You know, my guess is that this property would end up being worth in the. Four to six million dollars, the, the house, you know, as constructed. In exchange for that, we will be getting a hundred and four thousand dollars of affordable housing money, which. Based on my recollection of the multiplier that we get from the Affordable Housing Fund. That would end up being like maybe three-fifths of an affordable housing. To me, I'm not convinced that that trade-off is what. Would be, is, is something that would be consistent with the goals and objectives of the BBCP. So that, so based on all that, as it is currently constructed. I'm not, I'm not of the feeling that this is consistent with the BBCP.
All right, thank you, Kurt. I'm going to. Point out that the. City code and city annexation policies are met by this proposal. City policy one point two five E. City shall annex the Area Two land with significant development and redevelopment potential only on a very limited, in order to reduce negative impacts. On development, such annexations will be supported only if the annexation provides a special opportunity or benefit to the city. With the exception of parcels that are proposed for annexation that are already developed and seek no greater density or building size. Would be, would, would be required to assume and provide the same level of community benefit as vacant parcels. Unless and until such time as an application for greater development was submitted. Plus, the city, the annexation agreement for the, the proposal in front of us makes it clear. That what can be built there has to meet existing city code. So I don't think that we're in the business of telling a, a person who's bought a parcel. That they can build, the, the house that they want to build, if it meets code. They can't build. So I'm going to disagree pretty strongly with Kurt's point of view. I, I appreciate the policy issue that you've brought up. And I would suggest that you continue to raise it as a question of whether the cash in lieu. For single-family home redevelopment is adequate. I think that's a totally legitimate question, but in terms of this particular application, the application meets. The requirements of the city annexation policy. From my perspective, yes, Lisa first and then Kurt.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just going to echo what you said, Sarah. I think I've maybe been worn down a bit or gotten used to it over time on planning board, but there are often times when I wish. I could impose my policy objectives or make the rules be different than they are. And I'll often take some floor time to talk about how I think they're silly, and I, I think you raised a really good point about the value of this parcel coming into the city. And regardless of what this applicant builds, you know, what could be built there and what the ratio is for cash in lieu. I think, I think that's really fair, and I've had that same thought before. And under our current code and rules for annexation, I do think that this does meet the requirements. You know, the ratio maybe isn't what I wish it was, but we are where we are today and. I, I see my job as a member of planning board and the board's role to, you know, follow the code and, and do what it says to do. So I, I just, you know, I'm, I'm not actually pushing back on your broader argument. I think I completely agree with it. But in terms of the decision we're asked to make today, I would just refer back to the code and to staff's analysis and. And kind of the framework we have to operate under, under currently, and I, I think it absolutely, you know, meets, meets the requirements that's set up.
Kurt?
Thank you. Well, I, I certainly appreciate that, and I certainly am. Working off of my interpretation of the city code, specifically the BBCP as I read it. But I had a question for Sarah. Sarah, you cited, I thought you were, said that you were citing one point twenty-five?
City policy, it's not, not BBCP, it's city, city annexation policy.
Ah, okay.
Which. I, if it wasn't included in the packet, it was accessed, I think it was included as a link. So if you read through it, it's got, I don't know. A through H, some of which are not applicable, like a component on what happens in Gun Barrel. And no annexation outside the boundaries of Boulder Valley Planning Area. The elements that are applied to this kind of parcel, I personally feel are met. Given the current regulations. I was just saying, Kurt, if you, you're muted. I don't know if you.
Yeah, I was not saying anything.
Okay, sorry, Laura.
Thank you, and I really do appreciate this discussion. You know, I, I'm not a builder. I don't have a good sense of what it costs the applicant to acquire the parcel, deconstruct the old house, construct a new house. And how that compares with the benefit that they're getting and the cash in lieu that we are asking from them. I, I, that's not the kind of math that I'm prepared to do tonight. So I guess my question is for city staff. How did you determine that two times the normal cash in lieu was the right amount to request for this annexation agreement? Because my understanding from legal is that, you know, annexation is negotiation. And we don't have strict guidance on. Things like what, what we could ask for in exchange for the benefit that is being provided. So I think what I'm hearing from Kurt's request is, do we want to ask for more cash in lieu? We certainly cannot require them to build an affordable housing unit on their property. And I think I read in the packet that, that, you know, with RL one zoning, they can only have one housing unit. They could build an ADU if they want to, like any other unit, but they can only have one unit. We cannot require it to be affordable, so cash in lieu is an appropriate buyout. That's how we do it in the city. But how did we arrive upon two times the normal, a single-family housing cash in lieu amount?
It's a great question, and, and thanks for raising it. You know, so like years ago, we kept experiencing this issue on, you know, really what the right ask was for single-family detached homes. That don't have additional development potential, like an RL one situation. So staff worked with council to get some annexation guidelines adopted. So that's how we landed on two times cash in lieu as kind of the right fit for a single-family detached home. That doesn't have additional development potential in a situation like this. So it's been a longstanding policy that. Was approved by council. I want to say it was maybe around ten years ago, but I'd have to go back and look at the policy, but. So it's also created some uniformity in how we apply that in these annexations over time. And that's, it was really born out of conversations like this, I'm really, what's the right balance, so.
Okay, so if I could just. Glom onto one thing that you said there, Charles, that was very helpful, which is, you know, one of our goals is to be fair and consistent and apply. Guidance uniformly, and it sounds like this is a longstanding city policy of when we do an annexation for a single-family dwelling unit. This is the cash in lieu that we ask for. So that's very useful to know. Thank you.
Lisa and then Kurt.
Sorry, turned off my hand, but not my mute. I think Laura just said it really well, and I, I just wanted to highlight that, but, but I think the reason why it is the way it is. And again, perhaps it is not ideally the right number, and we might want to lobby for it to be revisited. But the, my understanding is the goal was for consistency and uniformity and that regardless of exactly who's sitting on planning board when you come up. Or which staff member from the city is reviewing it or whatever, that people have some understanding of, of what they're going to be asked. And, and that you're not seeing, you know, one neighbor asked to pay a certain number, and then another neighbor passed, asked to pay something. Much lesser, much higher, and that there's some, a degree of fairness. You know, I, I see it not only as uniformity, but, and I think Laura uses the word, but as, as being fair, so that we're not. Putting different numbers on different people depending on how we feel about a certain one. So I just wanted to highlight that.
Thank you, Lisa. Kurt?
Yeah, and I certainly appreciate that. I mean, the Fourteenth Amendment to the US Constitution guarantees equal protection under the law, right? And so, I think, and so I'm, I'm, I'm certainly very sensitive to that. A question for staff, though, I think that there have been situations where. We have either asked for additional affordable housing money in, in the annexation. Or further limited the FAR that was available to them on the site. Is that correct? I'm thinking about a project, this is not a single-family house, but a project on Fifty-Fifth North of Arapahoe. That was subject to long and sort of laborious discussion.
Outside of a single-family detached. With additional development potential, I, I think we've had those negotiations in the past, but. We don't have any analogues for those types of negotiations for a single-family detached home that doesn't have additional development potential.
Right, Lisa?
Yeah, I was just trying to think back, Kurt, and I haven't been here on as long as Sarah and certainly Charles has a much longer memory than both of us. But that, that's true. We definitely get into some pretty fine-grained and particular discussions and votes when it comes to something larger and denser and these bigger parcels. But for single-family detached, we're, we're not, we haven't historically, you know, been kind of. Trying to schmudge it around or try to move it for, for those kinds of parcels where only one house can be built anyway.
Kurt?
Well, I understand that the board may not be interested in requesting additional affordable housing money, cash in lieu. I would make, I, I would like to put out two possible proposals and just see what people think. One would be to further limit the FAR, the allowable FAR on the property. Below the, what I calculated is four thousand three hundred and fifteen to twenty-five hundred square feet. That's one possibility. Another one, which is less. Springent, I guess, would be to remove the portion of the property. That is west of the blue line and which could at any time be requested by the city anyhow. Remove that from the floor area used in calculating the allowable FAR under the compatible development rules.
So I, I'll respond to that and would like Laurel's input that I think would constitute a taking. Both, both of those things would constitute a taking. I, I think, Laurel.
Yeah, so the first one, we have done before. We've done a negotiation and annexation agreement where we.
say what the like largest allowable amount is. Part of the negotiation with the property owner is that they would come in and negotiate whether or not they wanted to accept that or, you know, it's kind of, again,
Just to clarify, was that for a single family detached home when we did that?
Yeah, let me pull up the examples. I have a couple of examples.
They don't have to be specific examples, I was just curious.
No, no, I would just scan it through my examples because I haven't been here as long as some other folks have, but I'm no, they're generally more, so they, the ones that I see have been for like developments of several single fa- family homes, so like not just one property. And that they that we've limited that. And then the other one. I it's not something I know the answer to off the top of my head as far as takings from part of the property, but I would assume it is, we are as the memo talked about dedicating that to open space or to an easement above the blue line. And I see Brad went off mute, so I don't know if he wants to add anything to it.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just, I I want to share with us, this is a moment where we probably want to be precise that we can never determine the outcome of a court case, which is what a takings would be, but we can only offer whether it's likely something might result in a taking or not. So sorry to be a little technical, but I just want to make sure we're be careful.
Yeah, right. It would just be a guess. Yeah.
So I I will respond, Kurt. I I would not be comfortable with either of those two. There's a nego, we are not in the business of negotiating an annexation with a on a single family home. They're very clear, consistent rules so that everything is consistent, whether it's your house or your neighbor's house. And I think frankly, this is a pretty simple annexation request. Staff and the applicant have already been negotiating. And I realize that you're fresh, you you would prefer a smaller house, but you know, it's not really our job. That's just not really our role when it comes to a single family home parcel annexation. That's just my response to your suggestions. Before you respond, I'm wondering if either Laura or Lisa wants to respond to your thought, your suggestions. Lisa.
Again, I I think I'm actually very sympathetic to what I think you're trying to do, Kurt. So I I hope that I hope I'm communicating that adequately. And also, I think in this case, it's not, it's not an appropriate thing for planning board to be doing. Yeah, I I think it's important that when people bring forward simple, single family annexations like this. And again, there there are good reasons why the city wants to pull some of these properties like this that are surrounded by city into the city, especially when they're already on service, because we don't have to pay. That means we're not obligated to provide them with water and so on. Beyond what like, it's already been done. So it's a lot lots expensive annexation for the city. And there are practical health and safety and like life safety reasons why we like to have those parcels come in. So you know, I I I just, I know I wouldn't want to do anything. One, I don't think it's appropriate. And two, I wouldn't want to do anything that set a precedent that it was going to be a more complex process and also where people wouldn't know how that would go. You know, on larger parcels, they already know that they don't know what they're getting. And that there's going to be a negotiation process, and that's just not what we do for single family. So again, I I appreciate the creativity and trying to come up with, you know, two options, which is awesome of ways that we might be able to move toward what what you're thinking about, but I just, I don't see it in this case.
Kurt and then Laura.
Uh, thank you for your input. I feel like this is already a non-standard annexation because of the special provision regarding the portion west of the blue line, right? There's that, the, 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 there's a, there's a a statement in the annexation that says, in the annexation agreement, that says that the city can at any time request that property and must be that the the property owner must be, must grant that then to the city. So the second after this is signed, the city could get that portion of the property, right? They would own it. And yet, my understanding is that at that the, they would still be allowed to build based on the full 11,766 square feet of of property. And you know what that comes down to in the compatible development rules. So it's, it it is definitely not a standard annexation from that standpoint. And so it, to me, it seems fully appropriate to account for that in i- in this other way.
Laura and then Lisa.
So I have one observation and then a question for staff. The observation is that I assume that the applicant's best alternative, if they don't like what we offer them in annexation, is just to stay a county property and build according to county rules. And so I don't have a good sense of what size of building the county would allow or how their development standards compare to ours. I don't know, Charles, if you have some insight on that.
Um, I don't off the top of my head. I do know that they probably would have a difficult time getting well and septic permits from the county, just by virtue of the fact that we have city utilities right there. It's essentially an enclave for all intents and purposes. And really what the jointly adopted comp plan says is that if you're eligible for annexation, you pursue annexation. So I I don't know that development in the county would really be an option for them.
Oh, so they couldn't just go ahead and rebuild unless we annex them, like they're, the house is torn down and they cannot rebuild it unless we annex.
Again, just based on the comp plan policies. I don't know that the county would would want to issue well and septic permits since it's, you know, an area two property that's served by urban utilities.
Can I just chime to and clarify something with you, Charles? I I think two state law says that if they're within whatever it is, 300 feet of a sewer line, you're required to connect to that or not be able to get septic.
Yeah, that's true. Again, notwithstanding, you know, the policies on the comp plan that talk about the city pursuing aggressively annexations in area two to get people off of well and septic.
So it would be functionally impossible for them to develop that at this level. Yeah.
So they could not rebuild a house as a county property and reconnect. They were already connected. There's no more house there. They couldn't reconnect, but still stay a county property.
I don't want to say that it would be impossible. I think it'd be very difficult.
Okay, okay, that's interesting to know. And then my second question is, I just want to clarify what Kurt said. I think I heard Kurt say that even if that land west of the blue line were dedicated to the city or if the city acquired ownership of that land, that that parcel, their compatible development standards would still be based on the full square footage, including that parcel that's in the open space?
It would be predicated on a- at the time of development, if, you know, they, if they, if they got annexed tomorrow and they pulled the building permit based on the 11,000 square foot lot. That's what we would base our calculations on. If it were subsequent to that dedication, that would count against their floor area ratio, that would count against their compatible, compatible development standards.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that last part. So like, if the scenario is as part of this annexation agreement, we say, let's do it now. Let's have the land be conveyed to the city now, because it basically says you could do that at any time. If we said convey the land as part of this annexation agreement, would the their development potential be based on the 11,000 square foot? Or would you subtract out that open space parcel?
It would be, it would be based on the reduced calculation of the dedication.
Okay, and that's what Kurt is asking for, basically. So I guess my question, my last question to city is, why did we not ask for that land just to be dedicated over to the city right now, rather than saying, well, we could get it at any time if we request it? Does it come with like maintenance burdens? Like, why wouldn't we want that land just to be dedicated rather than an easement?
I think because we already have a scenic easement over it. You know, which I think functionally provides that same control that it can never be developed, that, you know, there can't be any encroachments or improvements on the property. So I don't know that there's a need or a benefit to take it in fee at this point, when the easement, I think, serves the same purpose.
Okay. I mean, I think Kurt is pointing out that potentially a benefit is that it would then reduce the size of the house that could be built on that lot. At least if if you view that as a benefit, which probably the applicant does not. But if the planning board viewed that as a benefit, which Kurt, I think, does, that is something that could be considered. I don't have, I I guess I had not thought about that prior to now. I think it's an interesting proposal. I don't know that I have a strong opinion on it yet. So I'm going to shut up and listen to Lisa.
And I guess the other thing that I would offer too is that the annexation package that's been put together, excuse me, is consistent with all of the other annexations that we've done on Third Street on the western edge over the last, you know, decade. So just you know, for your ratification, we're also trying to be consistent with the the packages that we've put together up and down third.
That's good to know. So there are other properties that have had a similar scenic easement kind of situation? Okay, thank you.
Um, yeah, well, the first thing, and I'm trying to think how to phrase it because I'm not an attorney, but um is that the city, to to the takings question, and I'm not an attorney, but like by both parties agreeing to the contract, because it is the annexation contract, the city then gets that right to pull that that little piece above the blue line whenever they want it, while still having the protection of the easement without having to take possession right now. And I think that's why they structured it the way they did. And I think that's what makes it not so much a takings, because both parties are agreeing to the contract through the annexation. And then they're saying, yes, you can have it in the event that whatever. Whereas it might be more complicated to do it now before agreeing to a contract that both parties are agreeing to, but I'll leave it to writer minds than mine to see if I've got that right. And then I think my last question is just because I don't want this meeting to go any later than it has to. The opportunities for the applicant to appeal, one, could they ask to come back in front of planning board again with a fuller quorum of members? And two, would they also have the option or would their only option be to then take it to council and just see if council wants to do it unilaterally? Like, what what are their options if we can't get to four tonight?
Yes, I can weigh in on that unless Charles or Brad wants to. Okay, um, so I'm just, under our rules, this is what it says. So if we don't get about a four to zero for moving it forward, then the applicant has the opportunity to, within seven days, request a rehearing in writing. And then we have to follow the notice procedures, right? So it won't be next week. It'll be a little bit further down the line, which will push back their their council hearings. So they can ask for rehearing. The other option is, you know,
Sorry to clarify rehearing with at planning board, correct?
Yes, yes. And then the other thing, so that's one option, they could do that. They could also take the, so this is a recommendation, right, to to counsel? But they could take that to council. So say we, you don't recommend it or or you're split on it. That can go forward to council if they choose to go that route. So those are kind of the options.
Uh, thank you. I'm just going to interject one more time. So I I want to make sure everyone gets to speak as much as they want to, especially folks who are concerned about this, which Kurt, I mean you. And also, I I think if it's kind of coming out clearly that we're going to have a split, I might encourage us to move to a vote if if we can't come to some kind of agreement as for now. And then the applicant can then go about their night and decide what process process they'd like to take yet. So I don't want to cut off discussion too early. I just want to highlight that if we find that we're kind of starting to circle and spin and and we're not proceeding that that it might make more sense to at some point move to a vote and then move forward.
Yeah, thank you, Lisa. I totally agree. So I would like to suggest and that in a recommended amendment to the annexation agreement, which would subtract that portion of the property west of the blue line from the the property area that would be considered for the purposes of the compatible development rules.
Well, so you either need to put that into addition to the motion, or we can right now do a thumbs up, thumbs down on that recommendation. I'd suggest.
Yeah, and I would be happy with the thumbs up, thumbs down if we want.
All right, who supports that thumbs up? And who's doesn't thumbs down? Okay, so Kurt, it's not supported. So since you seem to be the fulcrum on which this vote will cast, are you going to vote against the suggested motion for annexation because of the of your hope that the amount of buildable land is less than what has been agreed to in the draft annexation agreement between the city and the applicant?
I will not vote against it.
Okay, that's all we need to know. That's no, no, and I think I appreciate that. And I think you've made your points, and I think they are, staff has heard them and they're interesting points. But I think we can move on to question number three. Lisa, you have your hand up.
Yeah, one quick thing, and I I don't want to delay it, but I I know I've probably been a bit of broken record on this, but I would be totally open. And I know staff has a million and one other things that are probably higher priorities on your list. But I would be open to maybe looking back at that 10 year old, this is the, how we determine cash and the whatever thing. I I would still want it to be applied uniformly, especially the single family annexations, but I think it might be appropriate to flag that as a potential work item to see if maybe that ratio and some of those numbers should be looked at. Because again, Kurt, I think your overall point is a super valid one. I just can't see applying it here. So that's all. Thank you, sir.
Okay, great. All right, so let us quickly go through. Issue number three is the initial zoning RL one appropriate for the subject property. I'm just going to say yes, given the requirement that if property is annexed, zoning will be established according to land use designation to the VCP land use map and conform to city zoning categories. Yes, the land use designation in BBCP is LR, low density residential, which is compatible with surrounding properties. And the initial zoning is consistent with the BBCP land use designation. So I say yes, in my opinion, yes, it is appropriate for the area. Laura.
I agree with you, Sarah.
Kurt. Lisa.
Same, I agree.
Okay, great. All right. I'm happy to make the motion unless there's further discussion. All right. No further discussion. Okay, Laurel, you popped up. Is there something that you want to say?
Yeah, just a reminder that if, you know, if we don't vote for to nothing, then the other option that we talked about earlier. So just a reminder, if you don't all vote together, we can talk about what's next.
But we need to take the vote. All right, I'm making a motion to recommend a city council approval of the proposed annexation of the property located at 3033 Third Street with an initial zoning designation of residential low one RL one pertaining to case number LUR 2021-00049. Incorporating this staff memorandum as findings of fact, subject to the recommended conditions of approval for the annexation as provided for in the proposed annexation agreement in attachment ski, is there a second?
I second.
Okay, Laura seconds. Is there any discussion? Okay, I'm going to read the motion again, and then we will take a voice vote. Motion to recommend a city council approval of the proposed annexation of the property located at 3033 Third Street with an initial zoning designation of residential low one RL one pertaining to case number LUR 2021-00049. Incorporating this staff memorandum as findings of fact, subject to the recommended conditions of approval for the annexation as provided for in the proposed annexation agreement in attachment ski. Laura.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
Lisa.
Yes.
And Sarah is a yes, the motion is approved. And I know staff heard both everyone's comments about possibly proposing a reconsideration of the ratio of cash and Lou for single family home annexations. Kurt, did you want to add something?
Yeah, first of all, I just want to express appreciation to both the board and the applicant and to staff for sitting through my my drawn out process. But I appreciate also that the, at least some of the board agree that this is something that should be looked into. And possibly this could be something that would come up in the work on the inclusionary housing ordinance that I know is coming up in September. I don't know if it would be appropriate or not at that time, but as as market rate houses have gone crazily more expensive, it seems like our corresponding affordable housing payments have not kept pace. And it seems like with every, especially single family annexation, we're just, we're exacerbating the unaffordability in net, even considering the affordable housing payment, the cash and new payments that we're getting, we're exacerbating the net unaffordability of this city. And to me, that is the right direction to be going. And to me, that is the right direction to be going and something that we should be addressing. So thank you.
Right, I don't know. I think the way we make policy, it usually takes a little longer than pushing something into existing legislation, but I think staff definitely hears. The interest in in reviewing the existing policy. So Kurt, thank you very much for bringing that up. Laura.
I just want to say really quickly, congratulations to the applicants and and thank you for your patience with us tonight and. Very happy for you to be part of the city, so welcome to the city. And I guess unless council reverses that with that, which I don't expect them to do. And I also want to express appreciation to my fellow board members and to Kurt, especially for raising this issue. I think you're right, this is probably something that should be looked at. I did a thumbs down on your amendment just for consistency reasons. You know, a fair application of existing policy, but I think you are right that we should crack this egg open and look at it again. And make sure that our affordable housing is keeping pace with market rate inflation. So thank you very much.
Okay, so now we move to matters. Any matters to bring up?
Nothing for me this evening. Brad.
I just wanted to acknowledge that you all have had. Discussion about some of the meeting format and timing and length of meetings. Obviously, the last couple have been within your goals, so congratulations. But just to try to further gain perspective from each of you. And and follow up with Sarah, I. Committed, and I may have done this to the group or maybe just in conversation with Sarah, so I can't quite remember, but at any rate. Want to plan to just call each of you in the next two to three weeks to get your perspective on things. Obviously, we also have the retreat coming up, and I know as I've. Said in several settings that everybody is working towards the same goal, which is efficient and effective meetings that. Give plenty of deference to the opinions and and. The applicants, but still also manage the. The cases as they come in and and we do acknowledge it's going to be a. A busy fall and and early winter here based on the current caseload that's coming through, so. You can anticipate a call from me in the next couple of weeks here and. Appreciate connecting up with people as I did a few months back when I started, so thanks in advance.
Thank you, Brad. Appreciate that. And do we have any matters from board members? Kurt.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. We got an informational item recently about. The DCS two point oh three Q. And I'm wondering, was that, was that strictly going to be an informational item? Is that going to come to us in any form? For consideration?
I think at this point, it's informational. I don't know that the changes will come back to the board. But while we're finishing up the meeting, I can take a look here.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I didn't hear what the item was.
Sorry, it was the design and construction standards section two point oh three Q. The the safety study. The safety analysis, crash, crash analysis, I can't remember what term is. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm glad Charles knows where to look.
Yeah, I'm looking. I'm looking right now. I'm sorry, I should know that off the top of my head.
You should too.
Thank you.
Charles, you don't have everything in your head? You don't know every single thing about everything?
It's funny, and I feel like I'm forgetting more now than I've ever learned.
That would be an impressive amount of stuff.
You know, an amazing amount.
The older I get, I take counsel that there's just more to know, so that's why.
Okay, anybody else have anything? All right, then I am going to adjourn this meeting. We beat our record of the last time. Congratulations to all of us. The meeting is adjourned.
Good night, everybody.